Come to order, City Clerk will take, uh, roll.
Ayalo, Burmester, Vitar, Carcone, Irvin, Beatrice, Klos Motesta, Lamedico, Jiruzzi, all present.
Pledge allegiance filed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the common council.
Pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
We have two pieces of legislation tonight. Does any of the council members want to discuss, uh, proposed ordinance number one?
Sure, so I'd introduce proposed, proposed ordinance number one, amending Article One of Chapter one through fifteen of the City of Utica Code of Ordinances, miscellaneous provisions and offenses.
We have a second?
Second.
Amending Article One of Chapter one dash fifteen of the City of Utica Code of Ordinances, miscellaneous provisions and offenses. Whereas Mayor Michael Gleamey and the members of the common council of the City of Utica are committed to maintaining safe, clean, and welcome, welcoming public places for the enjoyment and use of all residents, businesses, and visitors. Whereas loitering, excessive begging, and off, and unauthorized camping on public property can negatively impact the quality of life of residents and discourage economic development, tourism, and the use of public places. Where, whereas excessive loitering and public sleeping or camping in areas not designated for such purposes can create safety hazards, obstruct pedestrian traffic, and prevent the effective maintenance and the use of public facilities. Whereas a business and property owners have reported negative impacts on commerce and customer experience due to the activities associated with loitering and, and excessive begging near storefronts and commercial areas. Whereas the City of Utica recognizes the importance of maintaining public places that are safe and accessible for all citizens, including vulnerable populations such as families with children and elderly who may feel unsafe or uncomfortable. Whereas the public health and safety concerns including littering, sanitation issues, and unauthorized structures or encampments can arise from camping or sleeping on public property, um, necessitating greater resources for cleanup and enforcement. Whereas the prohibiting loitering, excessive begging, and unauthorized campaign aligns with the city's efforts to create a more orderly and functional use of public spaces. Whereas the City of Utica seeks to balance the need for public safety and the welfare with compassion for individuals in vulnerable situations. And this legislation provides for appropriate enforcement mechanisms while encouraging referrals to social services and other public or private agencies who provide assistance for those in need. Whereas it is in the public interest to establish clear regulations on the use of public property to maintain an environment that promotes the general welfare, safety, and economic vitality of the City of Utica. Now therefore be ordained by the common council that the City of Utica Code of Ordinances, Chapter one fifteen, be hereby amended. Anyone want to move a motion? Motion to move to committee? Any opposed? Commit. Next piece of legislation is, uh...
Just for clarification purposes, Mr. President, this is going to go back to allowing the discussion for the council members once these legislate, pieces of legislation are committed.
Yes. Guys, on this next piece of legislation, does anyone want to... Comment on it? It's, uh, the local law entitled registration and posting of owner and manager information and design naming of agent.
So I'd just like to make a motion laid on the table for discussion.
Second? Yep. Anyone want to, um, any discussion on it?
No, I suggest that we put this, we actually can discuss this one first. Um, that's fine. Then we can go back to the other one. So this is a piece of legislation that I actually introduced, um, back in two thousand twenty-two. Um, what ended up superseding that was the vacant registry that is still, is still on the books that the city has not done anything with since it was implemented back in two thousand twenty-two. So the legislative intent for this one, and this is after years of discussion with the Department of Public Safety that includes the Department of Public Works, um, the Fire Department, codes department, um, police department, so on and so forth, is that a lot of the times they have an issue with getting a hold of those that, um, own a building, own a property, um, that they do rent out, um, for those intentions. So what this does is it allows anybody that doesn't live inside the building, um, that every, excuse me, every building owner, um, is herein defined located within the City of Utica shall file a notarized statement of designation signed by the said owner, setting forth a name and address by street and number. Also, if applicable, a mailing address different in the county of Anita or otherwise within thirty-five miles of the city. Of an agent upon who processes may be served in any action or proceeding which may be commenced or instituted against said owner. Um, a post office, a post office box number alone is not sufficient to comply with the provisions. A notarized statement by said owner setting forth a name, telephone number, and address by street and number as well as mailing address if different of the owner, owners or property. And a notarized designation signed by the said owner, naming the city clerk as the agent upon the process against the owner may be served. And the post office address within or without the City of Utica to which the city clerk may mail a copy of the process against such power served upon the city clerk. So basically what that states is every owner of a building, um, in the city shall post inside that vacant building. If the person does not live within the city within thirty-five miles, that they have to register with it in the City of Utica. Therefore, if somebody were to go to a building, um, for a ROP or for an inspection, nobody's there. That posting would be posted inside there so that they can make contact with that actual person. A lot of the times when they go in the buildings, they aren't familiar with who owns the building. Um, they have to go through a trail trying to find out who that building is owned by. So by allowing this, this designates a person within the thirty-five mile range, um, in contact with, um, to be allowed that, that posting and having a manager of that property if that person does not live inside the city within thirty-five miles. Um, that way the clerk's office gets a, a tally of that. It goes into their system. That way, if it doesn't match, they can't get a hold of anybody that can contact that person, the original person that they designated it through. Um, so what this does is it gives a paper trail, um, for the city in order to contact those, um, with, with a, with a designated, um, owner of that building or a property manager. So with that said, I can open up the floor for discussion.
Anyone want to discuss?
I'll ask a question on that. So who would be the people that would be putting those, um, placards or whatever in their buildings?
So the owner of the said bill, the owner of the actual building. So say, for example, you have an owner that lives in Kentucky, right?
I understand that, but who would follow up on to make sure it's their codes?
So that's would be, it would be through the codes, fire department, whoever does the ROP inspections or the twelve, or the twelve oh fours through those buildings. Any other questions?
Has, uh, the, I know codes department isn't here this week. Have they weighed in on this?
Yes, I've actually talked with the codes department in regards to this piece of legislation. Um, this is, obviously you know this isn't first time that it's actually been introduced and discussed. Um, but I noticed that we have still been having some issues in regards to, number one, because the vacant registry building hasn't been appropriated. But I still thought that this should have been something in coordination with that, um, that that should, that this still should be moved forward. Um, it, the only other thing that I, I did want to add into this that I, that I didn't have in this is that, um, that they did have to pay a registration fee, fee with the city clerk's office. Um, and I think that would supplement any of the programs that we would have to do, um, to allow them to access that in their computer. Um, and then once the fire, that's why I wanted to wait till the fire department got here. Uh, Jack, this is a discussion. That's why I said the codes department wasn't going to be here. Um, I didn't know if there was anybody else that was here. But the fire department is supposed to be here through Chief Fingersaw.
Let's say we have a hundred and fifty, uh, owners of buildings.
You're gonna have a lot more than that.
So that's how, that's the original problem that, that's the original, that's the original problem that they have to go through. So by not having a designated person that's a property manager inside, what normally has to happen is that the fire department or codes department through their inspections. They have to go through either the water authority to find out who owns that building. They have to go through the property, property sale. They have to go through the deeds. They have to go through the assessor's office. Contact a property owner, property management firm, and they are designated to do that.
They really should have. I, I, I mean... No, but I mean, it will, that's what my question was. Who's gonna do it? It's gonna take a lot of time, but you know what? That's really something we should have.
It's something that we should have.
Should have had. I mean, you should have had it a long time ago.
Long time ago. And that's, and this is the problem. It's gonna take some working through, um...
It's not something you're gonna do within a year. It could take three, four years to get every building.
It could, it could take that, that amount of time. And that's when the, the fire department goes through and, again, the codes department, and even the police department, if they go in a building and they're looking to see who owns this building, and they can't find that person who owns the building, that's the whole point of designated a property manager that's available through those, through that. Code, it would be codes and fire.
More responsibility.
Well, it's not more responsibility, because they actually have to go through even more responsibility, Rocco, in order to find out who the person is. When they're in the middle of a situation, it's an emergency, and they can't find the person that, uh, that's supposed to be property managing the building. So that's really where this comes down to. And that's why even allowing that fee would supplement some of those onset costs of what would be on top of the clerk's office. Now with this law also, um, that's something that the clerk's offices, we're gonna have to figure out with them what, what systems that there actually are in order to implement that, um, through their system so that when somebody submits that paperwork, they can do that, um, through their department. And that was something that was brought up when we switched the system with the, um, city clerk's office. Originally, when that system went through, part of the things that they were able to, it was an add-on through that system that they have now, that this was something that was accessible for them to do, if they needed to add that on through that.
What is on the law now? Isn't there something that they do have to be within fifteen minutes of notify that somebody there? Because that's what Kathy Mack has told me in the past when I...
Not that I know of. And if that's the case, maybe that's something that urban rental agencies started when they sold the properties, but that's not, not something that I'm familiar with.
Other questions?
Yeah, Rock.
Yes, Councilman.
So when you look at all this, right, so the people that is, even no matter where they live, they own the building and pay taxes to the city. So there should be an address and a contact for these people that own the building. It shouldn't be that hard of a thing where if you told them you have six months or you have three months to send your address in and contact information and have it put up on the building. I mean, we do, right, am I right in saying that?
Sometimes, sometimes, sometimes there is properties that are easy accessible. And again, those properties are through people that actually live close here. It's this, this originally designated from absentee landlord legislation, if you recall. Um, but when we, when I resubmitted it, I kind of wanted to change it so that it was registration posting of owner or manager information of the designation of an agent. Um, but a lot of times that did happen is that they could not contact somebody, um, that didn't live, yeah, it was, it was a gas leak. There was a number of things.
Right now, what's on the law? Nothing? Nothing? Okay. So am I right in saying that about the taxes though? Every owner has to pay city tax.
So sometimes they go through the taxes, which is through an LLC. So sometimes you have to go through the LLC lookup. Not all the time is that under, that's under another LLC. So this is not going to be an easy process by any means, but at least each person that owns a property would get that designation, um, moving forward with that. That they have to designate a property owner if they don't live inside the city within that thirty-five mile limit. And I would even be, you know, okay with even, even shortening that to twenty-five miles. But I think to see where we, where we're at with thirty-five miles at first, um, would be, would be a start. And other municipalities that I talked to that do have something very similar to this have seen, um, a success rate after getting in contact with them and understanding that they have to register the building. Because once this is in the book and they get notified, say, for example, somebody does go and they, they, they can't, say, for example, the fire department can't go and they can't find somebody that lives there. So that's where it goes back to any corporation firm that violates this, plays, and neglects this, refuses to comply with this term, should be guilty of the violation and subject to that fine. So that would, they would be put on notice after that, that they now have to designate an agent within that, within that purpose.
Councilmember Ayal?
Yeah, I think another aspect of this, I'd be interested in hearing from our assessor's office. I know, I think our GIS isn't updated and ImageMate isn't. And it seems like this would be a component that needs to be ready to go.
So, so that's another thing, like ImageMate, ImageMate is somewhat up to date on the owners of the building. The LLC is really what it comes in contact, really comes, what the issue comes in contact with is that although they'll have somebody on there, I'm sure, and that's what the system that the clerk's department did originally when they switched over that system, is that the assessor's office would, is, is very similar to that system that the, that the clerk's office would have. I mean, and what Rocco mentioned earlier is that, you know, you say that it puts on more work for the responsibility for the fire department or the codes department and so on and so forth. It actually is in my, and I would admit this, putting more work on our clerk's office. And I think that that goes back to the point, by allowing that dollar amount to be set in there, I think that that could possibly offset a position that could in turn help this, with this piece of legislation and possibly help with another possible position within the clerk's office, depending on what we're able to get through this. So there's a, there's a two-part component, but the law has to go in the books of our development.
Our chief anger saw, do you have any comments on this? Take a look at it?
Yeah, so, uh, we've been talking about this for quite some time. Um, from fire department point of view, it, it's extremely helpful, we're dispatched with fire that we know that the building may be vacant. No matter what report we get, we have to service that building to the best of our ability. And, um, I'm all for this registry, uh, the registry. And I'm concerned about if the fire department's gonna have to try to enforce or should there be more codes, codes department, uh...
So that's gonna be a violation. That's, and this is, this is, there's some wording in this verbiage that I still have to clean up. That's why I wasn't ready to pass it tonight. I kind of wanted everybody's input on this. Um, and I apologize, I don't have a voice. I, I just obviously talk too much, so this is why I'm, I'm stuck with this raspy voice. I apologize for that. But, um, this is more, this goes beyond that vacant component of it, chief. This goes back to the, the whole entire point of, say, you don't have a vacant building. Um, you go, you go back to that absentee landlord component of it. Say you don't have somebody that's there and you can't get in contact with it. Mark just brought it up. When we originally discussed this legislation years back, and I'm sure that there's been some issues from the time that this was originally introduced till, till then, is that I think there was like a gas leak or something like that, and I can't remember. And I'm sure there was more issues, but that was the example that was brought up at the time, um, that the fire department couldn't contact anybody and they had no designation of who the owner of that building was. So what this allows that is if that's not there posted and they don't have a property manager attest to that building, which everybody should, in my opinion, if they don't live here, at least have a property manager to go check onto those buildings. You can now go into that building and you can see who that, who that register is under that.
And, uh, that would, that would help clear up a source of constant, uh, issues that we have, because we do have a big problem, especially when there's LLCs that own the buildings when we respond to these buildings. Uh, if they change property managers, if they don't have a property manager, um, we're, you know, if we have to, uh, cut power to the building. You know, a lot of times we can get right across, they give short-term assistance, we're working with the county social services, they have emergency assistance now. But ultimately, if it's a problem with that building, that building owner should be responsible for, uh, you know, getting assistance for his residence.
I got a suggestion on that.
Yep.
You were saying that there is times when they do change their property managers, right?
Yep.
So where, where in here do we put it, you know, within thirty days if you change your property managers?
So it does say that, it says, yeah, it's, it's in that two-part, it says in the event that a change of ownership, a change of the designation or a change of the resident superintendent such of building, the owner of the property shall file within the city clerk, that's under posting notices, section five, that's two. And they shall post a revision of the required notice in the building and a file of the copy of the same within the city clerk within thirty days of such change. Okay.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yeah, one question, it was years ago, you know, with the gas leak. I remember, I remember this, I think it was Ontario, somewhere over that area. And, you know, who's liable if you had to break down the door? Is the city liable to break down a door to get in there?
It's an exigent circumstance under emergency, so we usually just call the police just-
I mean, well, I'm using it as another facet, you know, we have this registry at the same time. I mean, if you have to break down the door to get in there and secure a gas leak, whatever the case may be, is the city, I mean, could they actually come after the city?
We're, we're doing it under emergency, under the guise of an emergency, so we're trying to rectify the emergency, so really no, as long as we're in good faith and have a reasonable cause.
Councilmembers, Bitar, Ferma, Sturk, Urban, do you have any? Councilmember Bitar?
Referring to the designation of an agent, I'm just trying to think through this because my understanding is under limited liability company law, LLCs already have to designate an agent, whether it's the secretary of state or another company. Do we see a potential run afoul or have a conflict between LLC law and this ordinance where we're asking these LLCs to designate a dual agent essentially? I mean, are there any issues? I mean, corporation councils is something to look into?
So I, I just got this, but I do see a potential issue with that. In addition to, obviously that means not just respect to this, but if they do name the city clerk as an agent, the city clerk is gonna be inundated for all of these companies with any service of process for, for anything. So that could get a little out of hand, but I do need to look at that. That is my concern, just skimming this right now.
So when I talk to other municipalities, they never hit an issue with an LLC having to designate that. Is the poster, is the post being inside the minute, inside the building of that renter? So this isn't, this isn't reinventing the wheel here?
No, not, not the posting.
What's it?
No, it's designating the city clerk to be the service for an agent.
Right, so what did they have to do with the LLC?
So if, so an LLC is a-
I know what a limited liability company is.
Yeah, but it's fictional. So you have to designate a specific person to accept service for any lawsuits or actions against the LLC.
Right.
This piece of legislation is saying, we're naming the city clerk as that agent.
Right.
So if, if an LLC in New York City gets sued ten times a year, the city clerk is gonna keep getting those, the service, they're gonna keep getting service for an LLC that I don't know that we want, the city clerk.
But the city clerk's not responsible for those LLCs. They're just getting note. Actually, that's even better that they would get notice of a lawsuit for the, potentially for the city to be able to understand what's going on and that there is a possibility that there's other issues within the city with that company that's doing that. On top of the fact of the LLC that has the issue, you would think that you would wanna know if there was other issues. And that was one of the discussions that we brought up when this was originally up. Yes, it is gonna be an issue that the city clerk's gonna get the responsibility, but all that stuff's gonna be, have to be put in a file and scanned into that system of what that is. But I think that that puts us in a better position of wanting to know what other issues these buildings or this, that other, other LLCs have with other municipalities. And that was something that was, that was brought up before. But I see that as a positive, and I'm sorry to the clerk's office, but that's another way for us to get in contact with of whether or not something is actually going on with that LLC in another location.
So Joe, other than what you're reading, other than that, that is gonna be, we're gonna get more contact in the event that there's any litigation?
Well, sure, we have the-
Where's the rub then?
Well, we have the substance on one side, which I agree with. I mean, it'd be very helpful to have these, this information posted, but then you're looking at the process as well. We have state law, we have to make sure that we're not conflicting with. And if we're, let's say, the twelfth municipality to do this, that means there's eleven other city clerk's offices getting the same information on the same LLC. I think it becomes a question of-
And they've never hit an issue.
Possibly due process rights too. I mean, we just, we just can't be in conflict with, with state law.
I don't, I don't see this being a conflict with it. If, if somebody, I believe, and if you find anything else in the meantime like that, they bring that up as an issue, then that's something that we could possibly talk about in the near future. But having additional components of that, I don't see that as a problem at all.
Well, I, the, the one potential issue I see coming about is if we attempt to wanna serve one of these entities, we're serving ourselves, number one. And I can see some-
Can you, can you explain that in a little more detail?
You guys set up a meeting and discuss this.
The service of processes is notifying of a lawsuit. I mean, that's what we're talking about, the service of papers.
We're not gonna let two or three people dominate.
Councilman Kukon.
Rock, with all due, with all, Rock, with point of order, with all due respect, this, this is the issue, is that this is the process that I'm following for the rules of order. But this is the discussion that we are having, hence the reason why everybody was invited here tonight, Rock. I apologize that this is the way that the meeting had to be set up, but this is the way that it had to be set up for this discussion to happen. I have no problem furthering, but I need to know what the issues are that they're trying to bring up before I have that next meeting.
I would see this being a problem, Rock.
Yeah, I can just add too.
It's not a third point of order.
I just, my only thing was, just if we can get the assessor's office and codes next time to discuss it, because there's parts of, like the tax parcel, that's not even updated on what we do have, and there's certain things we can't cite as it is because of our software, so if we can get that fixed too, I'm in. That's all.
Yeah, I just, again, other municipalities are able to do these things and there's always an issue with us trying to do it. If the issue becomes arose throughout that, where it becomes a problem for our clerk's office, then that becomes amended. But the city can't keep-
Well, I-
Within the, within this specific piece of legislation, probably about five or six. And that's just in the adjoining counties. And that one person has brought up the issue, of the designated agent, yes. And it has not become an issue.
How about the next piece of legislation?
So this one's a meeting, I think we're gonna call it a meeting. I think I spoke, if anybody has any questions, concerns, anything that they wanna submit. But this legislation was submitted, you know, five days ago, so if anybody had any questions, they could have looked over that.
Just put, put this on.
This, we made a motion to lay it on the table. What's that?
Would you, would you like to schedule a meeting? Is that what you're asking? The sixth, November sixth will be our next meeting.
We don't have a meeting tomorrow, Mark, do you know?
No. Okay.
When was our next homeless committee meeting, by the way?
Well, that was on, that was on October, or when did it last?
For November?
So we do, I'd have to check. I'd have to check.
Well, originally we were gonna do the meeting for the, I was gonna have the time, but we ran out of time. When did I tell you? On the thirteenth. An odd, an odd Wednesday, so it wasn't a night of a meeting.
Yep.
So I don't mind if you don't-
Well, I don't care, but you, we could actually do it. We don't have a committee meeting before what, next Wednesday's meeting, do we? So if you could do it at six to five p.m.
I prefer five.
Five, or five would be, yeah, five, five's very good.
Everyone's okay with that? Five o'clock, five o'clock, November sixth?
We're here, we don't have everything jammed up.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn?
Is that work done?
Are we gonna discuss?
I, I mean, it's up to you guys.
What do you gotta discuss? There you go.
Go ahead and discuss it. I'd like to have my corporation counsel on, on this one issue, that's all.
On, on which one?
We just got discussing on the, we just could, for the last ten minutes.
On the-
You see clarification?
So, so I just got this, but as a-
That's fine.
As my, as my gut reaction, I can see an issue. So when you designate someone for a service of process, it means they, that is the person that gets served with any lawsuits or anything that, they're supposed to be notified. So they're deemed served. I can see an issue if we, as a city, want to go after an owner, there's a codes issue or something and we're trying to serve them and we serve our own, we serve the city as their only agent. I can see a ton of litigation issues being raised in relation to that. Most people, you either designate a specific agent and someone in the company, and then you designate the secretary of state as a secondary. That's typically how it's, how it's done.
Why can't we do that?
But this is, but this is different. You're specifically saying to designate, if they don't have anyone, they have to designate the city of Utica. So if we wanna serve them, we're gonna run into issues. I can see that we're serving our own.
So does the city of Utica, anybody, anybody designated amongst themselves and anything else? Does the city of Utica designate an agent any other place where we would serve ourselves?
I, I, I don't, I don't believe so.
I mean, that, 'cause that's something to look into, because if there's not an issue there, or designated herself.
Yeah, but we're-
Or maybe we take the same model as being a secondary.
Right.
But really, the, the point is that we wanna make sure that the communication has to flow through the city in some capacity.
I do get, I do get.
So maybe it has a second that would work.
And I have no-
Sam, maybe you could, you could give the council or list of the municipalities that you contacted, and you could contact them to see what, if there is any.
And, and I guess I would just clarify a couple of things. I don't know why, I'm just, I'm unsure here. I'm not sure why this was done as a local law. It can be done as an ordinance to avoid laying it on the table and, and all of that.
We don't need an answer.
Yeah, and I was told, I was told when it was originally drafted that it had to be a local law.
Councilmember Williamson?
Just got one saved round. You know, in the news recently, we had the Knights of Columbus, that big building's been vacant for ten plus years.
Long as it's been here.
And it's got to the point, you know, if there was ever a fire in there, you know, that would be a pretty, pretty big place, you know, catch on fire. And so, I mean, how do we get to that point where, you know, now they're going to the judge or getting at the highest court levels? How come the city couldn't do anything prior to that coming to a point, even though they had codes violations over and over and over again, years after year after year? How come nothing ever happened? Now, I guess the last I saw in the news was to go to the court at a higher level. So I'm just curious, when you get to that point when they had a big building like that, a, a very big building, I mean, it's been left unattended for all, in the middle of the city.
So, so Mark, I, I can kinda piggyback on that if Stephanie, whoever else could take on. So that goes back to the actual other piece of legislation. And I had talked to Mary Galimi, and I know that one of the main components of having a public safety commissioner was what, was that they were looking at public nuisance. So our public nuisance law hasn't been updated in over twenty, twenty-two years. And one of the things that I thought he was gonna be here tonight, so that's why I really did, I wasn't gonna discuss this public nuisance abatement component of it, but one of the things that I think that we needed to address in there was one of those possibilities of now that we have somebody in that place to, to do that, making sure that we update our public nuisance abatement law that could address those actual issues that you brought up. The only reason why I haven't made any amendments to this myself, and everybody's got a copy, like I said, the last time that it was updated was in two thousand and two. And we really haven't touched on nuisance abatement. And I think that, you know, when you look at from the police standpoint, the police standpoint goes from if a person's nuisance, such as like their shots fired incidents at the house. Then you look at the fire department issue of how the nuisance abatement goes into that. You look into the codes component of how they take on that nuisance abatement. So I would like to address it more so that does, doesn't just come from the police standpoint, that they're not the ones that are, that can spearhead this, but more from a public safety commissioner standpoint and possibly adding to that on how we could coincide all this through the vacant registry, through those things, and update our nuisance abatement to get to that point of now having that public safety commissioner to address those issues. And that's something that I, I, I know that I did call this meeting and it was a special meeting, but to get the discussion going before that next meeting, this is the process that had to play out. So just as a heads up, at that next meeting, I know that I, I, I watched the public safety commissioner was at this meeting, but obviously it's a good thing because everybody is here on their own time and it should be done through a committee, committee meeting component. So I just wanted to touch base that that was, trying to tie all this into, all that together.
All right, take the motion.